I'd like to welcome you to the Bossier City Council Meeting today. 3:00 PM Tuesday, October the 18th, 2022. We'll have the call to order invocation by Councilmember Chris Smith. Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Jeff Free. Please stand.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the day that you have given us. Lord, thank you for the many blessings that you bestow upon us each personally and on to the city of Bossier. Lord, I pray that you be with us in this council chamber today as we conduct the business of the people of Bossier City, Lord, and be with all of our elected officials at every level, Lord, that we make the right decisions that bring blessing upon your name. Lord, I pray that you be with us as we depart here today and touch us until we meet again. In your in holy name we pray, amen.
Please join me in flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call please.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
All present? Counsel, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings Law and the adopted Bossier City Council meeting rules resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly, and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City council-appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve minutes of October the 4th, 2022. Regular council meeting in dispensable reading.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? Yes, ma'am. State your name.
Molly Corbett. I am a resident of both Bossier Parish and the Shreveport city limits. I have the honor of living in that little keyhole behind Coates Bluff. My address is 1,001 River Oaks Drive. And I'm not certain, and that's Shreveport. I'm not certain if it is of any consequence, but I did note in minutes that it was reflected that Mr. Jeremy Heffner is an employee of the Bossier Council on Aging, and that is not correct. He is an employee of the Bossier Arts Council, and I just wanted to make sure that that reflected correctly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You make a motion to amend it.
So noted. Okay. So that's one revision we'll make to those minutes. The clerk has noted that in her records. So do we have, we have a motion and a second? Okay.
So we're gonna do that with the amendment, approve the minutes with that amendment?
Okay.
Mr. Montgomery, Mr. Williams.
Yeah, make the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I'll second that again.
Counsel, please cash your vote.
Motion carries.
Now we will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Counsel, we've had three or two items requested to be added. The first one will be under new business, item number 35. Adopt a resolution to renegotiate the terms and provisions of the existing agreement between the city of Bossier City and the Bossier Arts Council. First and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Have a motion, Mr. Hammond, second, Mr. Montgomery. Is there comments from the audience on this agenda addition? Counsel, please cash your vote.
Motion carries, that item will be added. The second item will be add new business, item number 36. Introduce an ordinance appropriating $1,230,432 from the American Rescue Plan Act grant for a one-time premium pay allowance of $2,000 to eligible full-time employees of the city of Bossier City. That's a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. A motion, Mr. Hammond, second, Mr. Montgomery. Any comment, counsel? Any comments from the public? Counsel, please cash your votes.
Motion carries, that item will be added.
I like the mic. Is that all?
I'm sorry?
Is that all?
One more.
That's the only?
Those only additions.
That was the only additions.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve the?
Did you want to do the other as well?
Oh, we're gonna delete, yeah, we'll make the motion to delete item 26.
Second.
Under?
Under new business.
New business? I think it?
Any comments, counsel? And any one from the audience would like to speak on this deletion? Counsel, please cash your vote.
Also, I'd like to make a motion, we approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Mr. Hammond. Yours not working again?
It's just very delayed.
Okay. And then Mr. Williams made that motion and Mr. Montgomery made the second?
Yes, uh huh. And do we have anybody who would like to speak before we vote? Please cash your vote, counsel.
Motion carries. Ceremonial matters, recognition of guests, Mr. Wade Rich, Public Works Director, and Ms. Sherri Wood, Animal Services Superintendent with a shelter update.
Good afternoon, counsel, mayor. Many times when we, when Animal Services comes in front of the council, it's to deal with a situation of unpleasant nature. And today I'd like to congratulate Sherri and her staff at Animal Services, their partnership with Best Friends Animal Society. She's gonna briefly go over some of the numbers she has. Very quickly.
Good afternoon, counsel, mayor. Thank you for your time. I'm Sherri Wood. I'm the superintendent at Animal Services. Just this year, in an effort to realize the constituents' desires for a higher live release rate, we partnered with Best Friends. Best Friends is an animal society, which is a rescue group that started in southern Utah and is currently one of the driving forces leading the nation to, or I'm sorry, in movement to save as many lives, animal lives, as possible. They partner with local and municipal shelters like us around the country to help them make changes that will save animals long-term. Some of the realized benefits of being partners with them this year that we've seen is our first national adoption event with them allowed us to adopt out 28 dogs, 23 cats, and that's a total of 51 animals in three days. It also gave us $3,950 from Best Friends to cover animal fee, or I'm sorry, the adoption fees, which were waived that weekend in order to save as many animals and adopt out as many animals as possible. Since July 15th, Best Friends has given us two grants that will total $56,000 to help us implement sustainable life-saving measures over the next year and cover waived adoption fees for 275 animals. Participating in other adoption weekends saved 10 lives. And since July 15th, which is when we started the partnership with Best Friends, adoptions have gone up 28%. This is a total increased adoptions from last year of 43% for the year. And we are very proud of that. I am very proud of my team, which has done so much to make this happen. So while we have partnered with people like Best Friends, our team is really giving their all to make sure that we take every advantage of that. And we just wanted to let you guys know what we were doing. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Rich, and also Ms. Wood. Very good. We appreciate your passion and your commitment to those who love animals, and it's wonderful. Okay. Unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance authorizing $25,000 to come from the hotel motel tax fund to support B. Bossier through the Bossier Chamber of Commerce. Final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Maggio. Discussion, counsel. The floor is open for comment. Counsel, please cash your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached professional services agreement and purchase agreement with Avaya, Aura, and Carousel Industries of North America, Inc. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Montgomery. Discussion, counsel. Comments? Counsel, please cash your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to require the mayor and city administration to mark all city vehicles under Louisiana Revised Statute 49:121, identification of public property by January 1st, 2023, except that those are exempt, except those that are exempt by state law and any vehicles found to be in noncompliance with this ordinance can state law after January 1st, 2023 be parked until those vehicles become compliant and further than anyone in violation of this ordinance following that date be fined in accordance with Revised Statute 49:123. Final reading.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, counsel?
Just the, kind of the way this is written, just to kind of clarification, some of the vehicles that, for, for security reasons, will not be marked, correct?
We have?
Some of the police and fire vehicles for, for security purposes will not, will not be, will not be marked with an emblem.
We're gonna get with? I think Brad had a couple that he want to talk about, so we'll get with him, talk to him, and let's spread it around to the council and see what they think.
Any other comments? The floor is open for public comments. Counsel, please cash your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to declare the completion of the Bruce Street Force Main Project by Lawler Construction, Inc., including deductive change order number one in the amount of $3,360 and to amend ordinance 14 of 2022, leaving a surplus of funding to supplement Fund Sewer Capital and Contingency Fund. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Free, second, Mr. Smith. Discussion. Any comments from the public? Counsel, please cash your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $10,000 from Fund 495, the 2015 LCDA Bond Fund, to purchase time clocks. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Got a question. I'm sorry, Mr. Darby, you ready?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Montgomery.
You know, what is the depreciation lifespan of these time clocks?
I believe they'll last 10 years or more, but we can order a spare to have on hand in case anything happens.
We hadn't had this come up in a while, but always in the past, we have understood that the bond issues are 20 to 25 years, and you want to try your best to match the asset purchase to the life of the debt. Because what you end up with, just say it's 10 years, then you've got another 10 to 15 years of paying on debt on something that doesn't even exist anymore. So I would like to see us take that money from somewhere else. It's a minimal, minimal amount that I think we can find and reallocate that and not take it out of the bond money.
Okay, a capital fund? Okay.
So I'd like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
So we have? Tell us, do we have to have another reading on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So we have a motion made by Mr. Montgomery, and the second, Mr. Smith. Enter discussion, counsel. Floor is open for comments. Please cash your vote.
Motion carries. And we're gonna need another motion to reintroduce as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Counsel, discussion. Please cash your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $3 million from the 2018 LCDA Bond Fund towards parking lot improvements expansion at Tinsley Ballpark. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Free, second, Mr. Montgomery. Discussion. Counsel, on last meeting, we had quite passionate discussion regarding this item. And I believe some of the issues that were brought up by Mr. Hammond and Mr. Smith were valid concerns. And I wanted to ask and request that they may consider forming a committee to look at some creative ways to do what, what you think would be best for citizens, taxpayers regarding the ballparks in Bossier City, if you guys would agree to?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
And if Mr. Jacob would do a resolution for that purpose of a committee, recreation, parks and recreation committee, and work with the administration to better, for the betterment of the parks and recreations. Yes, sir.
Might add funds and funding.
Creatively, hopefully.
Good afternoon. My name's Joshua Del Coleman. I live at 321 Antietam Drive in Bossier City. I'm also the president of Bossier Dixie Baseball. So we support the idea of the new parking lot at Tinsley. We recently, on our own down Bossier Dixie, flew to North Carolina. We bid on the 2024 World Series. And a lot of that, those guys that came down here to view Tinsley were, loved the park, saw that it needed more parking, and were also a little concerned with the RV spots. We would also like, when the World Series comes here, they will bring all 48 Dixie voting officials around the country will be there. So our idea to keep this tournament coming is for 2024, we will bid on the 2026 Dixie Youth World Series. We've been working with the Sports Commission, and the number we're coming up with is that at a minimum, they feel the economic impact on the city of Bossier will be $5 million those two weeks, with a possibility of it being to an upward of $7 or $8 million for those two weeks. So we support the idea.
Thank you so much. Okay, any other comment, council member? And I think we had a motion, Mr. Free?
Yes.
Okay, and Hammond, okay.
Mr. Montgomery. It was Mr. Free, Mr. Montgomery.
Okay. So did I open the floor for others to speak?
No, sir.
Well, the floor is open.
Good afternoon, counsel, Mr. Mayor. My name's Scotty Davis. I reside at 819 Domain Drive in Bossier City, Louisiana. One of the reasons I'm here today is, you know, from the meeting on October 4th, I know some of the topics was brought up in what y'all just mentioned regarding the travel teams and the rental, the facilities at Tinsley. I'm president at Bossier Little League, been on the board there for 11 years. Been currently been president there for seven. You know, Tinsley doesn't, not really a decision that Bossier Little League can make. But if one of you guys were to, were to ask if it would be a direct impact on our league, certainly it would, as far as the allowed general usage of renting the facility and it impacting the kids that play and the parents that pay to play in within our league. There's a lot of travel teams that play in multiple leagues around here, and they do so to have a practice facility, which is great. You're supporting the leagues, it's better than the competition within the league. We 100%, 100% support that. On a yearly basis, I probably get 25 to 30 phone calls a year asking, can we sign our kids up to play there? Not play any games, just have somewhere to practice. We don't allow that due to an effect in our numbers that we have to report to Little League International. Once you get over a certain number of teams that directs, that affects, excuse me, affects the way that you draft your teams. It could be, you would have to draft in alphabetical format. You could have to draft from A to L to M to Z or birthdate. So we don't allow people to just sign up to come over there and play just to have a free practice facility and pay your $500 a year. Over the last three years, Bossier Little League, what we have invested at Clifford Almond Park and at Metaview, where we support our softball program.
Mr. Darby, as a point of order, and no disrespect, sir, but I think this conversation that you're having is better served with the newly formed committee with Councilman Hammond and Councilman Smith. This ordinance that we're proposing today has to do with building a parking lot at Tinsley.
Well, I thought that's what the last meeting was, and it was, we've got too much travel ball, too.
What I'm pointing out is that we discuss what's on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Darby, I think you're very familiar?
Yes.
With that, it's no disrespect to you. Your information is incredibly valued, but I think as a point of order, that that needs to be discussed with the newly formed committee. So then that information can come back from not only you, but others, and be disseminated to the city council. And then we can propose something on the agenda to have that discussion.
I see.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, and thank you, Mr. Montgomery, for that point of order. Any other comments? We have a motion, Mr. Free, second, Mr. Montgomery, on this item. Counsel, cash your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to appropriate funds to the lateral B1 drainage canal for a total of $1 million to come from the Riverboat Gaming Capital Fund and to authorize the mayor to execute an agreement with Nixon Engineering Solutions and CEA with Bossier Parish Levy Board. Final reading.
So moved.
Motion? Our motion made by Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Montgomery. Discussion, counsel? And the floor is open for comments.
Clinton, is there anything you need to say about that? What's gonna happen? Why we're doing it? How's it gonna be shaped? And we had a good meeting with Clinton.
It's, this is the part of lateral B1 that goes from Airline Drive right by where the old Chevron with McDonald's used to be, wraps back around the Highway 80 behind Thrifty Liquor. And currently, right now, is a grassed section, and we're just going to turn it into a concrete section, try to get a little more water storage and help that area out.
Is, is that gonna appease the DOTD? I know there's some, there's a business trying to go in there, and there was a problem with DOTD with the ditch and everything with them allowing access back out on?
Coordination with DOTD will be a main priority with this project with the corvettes going under Airline Drive, ensuring that that's not impacted hydraulically. And then also coordination with the levy board, as it's currently a levy board maintained ditch.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patrick. Any other comments? Anyone from the public would like to comment on this item? Counsel, please cash your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to appropriate $350,000 from the 2017 LCDA Bond to purchase and install a new generator at the Brookshire Grocery Arena and cover all project costs. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Once again, I have a comment. And again, I know this is a final reading, but I was absent, I believe, from the previous reading. So I'll ask, what is the life of a generator? 10 years? I don't know, Rodney or Ben?
Yeah, the, the previous generator that we're replacing has been there since the inception of the facility, which is over 20 years, so.
Okay, so you're comfortable that?
Yes, sir.
That we're okay with the matching of the debt versus the life of the asset? Thank you.
Any other comment from council members?
Are, are we even gonna be able to get it? Ben, is it? I know, I mean, just now, I know there's national back orders on a lot of, lot of stuff.
Under state contract right now, the lead time is 36 weeks from the day we, we signed the contract to get it coming.
Okay.
Anyone else in the audience would like to speak on this item? Motion was made by Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Maggio. Counsel, please cash your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance 96 of 2022 and approve revised change order number three for the East Bank Fire Station project with an increase of $226,377.21 for a total contract price of $3,103,009.77.
So moved. Second.
Counsel, motion is made by Mr. Smith, and second, Mr. Maggio. This is a typo, ordinance revision?
Yes, sir, this was, this was the one that they requested that we, you passed ordinance, you originally passed that, the one ordinance, the, the ordinance 96 of 2022. And there was a typo in that, and so that's what they're requesting us to fix the typo.
Okay.
I think there was a number, Mr. Patrick, that was submitted to us incorrectly.
Yes, the, the original change order form, there was just a line item that was inadvertently not added to the dollar amount. The money was appropriated. It's just fixing that typo on the front form of the change order form.
Okay. Any comment, council members? Floor is open for public comments. Counsel, please cash your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to declare the completion of the Airline Water Tank Rehabilitation and Painting Project by Utility Service Company, Inc., including deductive change order number one in the amount of $14,188.19 and to amend ordinance 20 of 2021, leaving a surplus of funding to supplement the Water Capital Contingency Fund. Final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith, and the second, Mr. Hammond. Discussion, counsel? Floor is open for comments. Counsel, please cash your vote.
Motion carries. New business, adopt a zoning ordinance favorable by MTC with a midnight close. First and final reading. Petitioner Eddie Hackelman, Total General Contract and LLC, location 2766 Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana, requests conditional use approval for the sale of high and low content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a bar.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion, Mr. Hammond, and second, Mr. Smith. Any comments, counsel? Any comments, council? And the floor is open for your comments, public. Yes, sir.
Eddie Hackelman, and on this, we had asked to be open to 2:00 a.m. on our application-
Your address, sir?
Sir?
Your address?
Yes, sir. The address is 2766 Barksdale Boulevard.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Sorry about that.
Sorry.
And we'd asked that y'all consider that it'll be open to 2:00 a.m.
Is that what the normal time is on, on bars?
Yeah, I talked to Carlotta about this ear- earlier, I think she's fixing to explain.
Carlotta, Askew Brown with the Bossier MPC, yes, we have him on the next agenda for November to extend his hours of operation to 2:00 a.m.
Wait, where exactly on, what's it, what's it by, Carlotta?
This is that Old Lewis furniture there on the corner of Barksdale and Barbara.
So you're going in there?
Yes.
Right, what's the current hours?
Right now, they have to close at midnight because they're within 300 feet of residentially zone property. So that's currently, as of today, but they don't plan to operate currently, but we have them on the agenda for November to extend their hours to 2:00 a.m.
You, is MPC okay with that, too?
Yes.
The board?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hackelman. Okay, any other comments? Anyone from the audience would like to speak on this?
Council, you do know that this is just to the midnight, as of right now, it has to go back before the MPC, and then they send it back to us.
I think Ms., Ms. Brown is aware of that. Okay. All right, council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to adopt the general fund budget for 2023. First reading.
Phil, if you want the amendments now?
Motion-
We had some amendments, Mike.
Second. Yeah. Motion and a second on this item.
I'll ask. What's that?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Hammond, second is Mr. Williams. Okay.
What did y'all do?
Would you like to make amendments now, Philus?
Yep.
Out of number two-
I, I have, um-
-adopt general fund budget for 2023.
I have the ones that you requested here.
Were we gonna combine all of them?
That's what we were asking, but-
Yeah, I was, if you wouldn't mind-
Well, hold on, we got some amendments. Do, do you want to read those amendments out loud?
Do you want me to read them, read them out loud?
Do we need to?
Yes, sir, you have to read the amendments out loud.
So you want them now?
But you still can, you can't, you can't do them all at once and then make your amendments?
Yes, sir, you can. That, I think that was the very next vote that he had, he was gonna do the general fund all at one time and then combine everything else, I think was-
However, y'all wanna do it.
Was what.
Mr. President, if I may, and I, I think I need to direct this, Ms. McGraw, we have had the public hearing required, have we not?
Public hearing is below.
Gotcha. All right, so we're gonna combine all that and give the public a chance to speak.
Yes, sir. But you're still, before we take any action, before any votes are taken-
Correct.
-we still have to allow public to comment.
Mr. Williams?
Okay, the first one I had was amend the general fund budget section, payments to other governmental agencies to remove the Bossier Parish School Board Traffic Control Officers $25,200. The second one that I had was, would be the amend the general fund budget section, city council salary budget to add a part-time salary of $25,000 to hire a part-time employee. And then the third one that I had was amend the city count, amend the general fund budget to remove the part-time salary of $55,000 from the city attorney budget.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's what I have.
Okay, now, the amendments are, need to be noted by Ms. Williamson because that's going to impact the budget, so did you get all of those?
A general, amend the general fund budget section under city attorney budget to remove the part-time salary of $55,000. The second one was amend the general fund budget section, city council salary budget to add a part-time salary of $25,000 to hire a part-time employee.
Hey, Ms., Angela, could you come to the mic, please? I can't hear-
Do you wanna make those motions and vote on those, and then she says she has some additional ones as well.
Might as well do them all at one time.
Okay.
What, but the other one, would, have we already funded the officers?
No. It's, it's, it was in the budget and it, when the, you had the budget workshop on September 6th, if it wasn't done and the contract wasn't done by the time we introduced the budget, I wanted to remove it.
So the contract hadn't been done?
I have not seen the contract.
Was anybody checked?
School board. I have checked with the school board, I have not seen anything from the school board.
I, I would, this, that is very sensitive, we're talking about the children of the parish, and I understand what we agreed to, but before we just take that out of there and let people run with that, I think it would be prudent to leave that in there. We always have the opportunity to take it out at the next reading, but let's get some confirmation where we are in, in this process of the contractual negotiation. I, I would ask-
I don't know why it's been going on for, what, six months? Four to six months?
Yeah, but I mean, you're dealing with governmental entities and, you know, we just all need to understand that a couple of people need to make the decision and, and understand this is for the benefit and safety of all of our children and grandchildren throughout the parish, so I would ask Mr. Jacobs to, whatever you need from us, and I'm sure Mayor Chandler, you know, whatever we can do to facilitate this process to-
The last-
But I would offer that we leave that money in there and, and let's take a slow approach before we take that out.
Well, I'd second that.
There hasn't been a motion to, to do, to do any of these amendments, and so as of right now-
Okay, I thought he was making them when he was reading them.
Yeah, she was reading, I got, I was gonna read them, but, uh-
So we're just gonna strike that one for now, is that agreed?
Yeah.
All right. Now, I'm sorry, Ms.-
Oh, thank you. Um, we're requesting for information services, another $9,200 for the telephone maintenance contract, which has went up, it's a state contract, but it's went up for 2023.
How much did it go up, Angela?
$9,200, and that'll be in the telephone service line item. And Finance is requesting to move $13,655 from travel and training to salaries and benefits to fund the new accountant one position, so this will have no effect on the bottom line.
How much was that again?
$13,655. Public Affairs is requesting to increase salaries and benefits $12,315 for a public information officer position, and the probationary period for this position will be one year.
That was $12,315.
For clarification purposes on that as well, that it will be essentially the same salary that the previous PIO was making, so we're, the, there won't be any money difference, I mean, it's like several hundred dollars, I don't know what-
Yes, it was reduced out of the police budget already.
So it, we're not increasing that person's salary, we're just matching it. I wanted that for the record to be known.
And that's all I have for general fund. I have one more for alternative fuel when we get to that one.
Does somebody gonna, does somebody wanna make that motion? I have the general fund budget section for the part-time employee for city council, general fund of the city attorney budget to remove $55,000, information services $9,200 for telephone maintenance contract, finance $13,300, I mean, $13,655 for travel and training to new payroll person, and then $12,315 for a new public information officer on a one-year trial.
I'll make that motion.
Probationary period.
Second.
You made that motion? I'm sorry.
Mr. Montgomery. Montgomery, Mr. Smith. Okay, so this is all under general, uh, general fund budget, item number two.
Yes, sir.
So we're going to ask if there's any comment from the public before we vote. Okay. Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Need another motion?
A motion to introduce as amended.
I'd make the motion, we introduce the general fund budget as amended.
Second.
Discussion, council? Please cast your vote.
Public?
I don't think they're going to have any but, public comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. I had, introduce an ordinance to adopt the water and sewer budget for 2023, and Mr. Williams, I think you would want it to combine at that point.
Two through, what, what's-
It's three through 25.
Three through, um- Is it three through?
25.
Three, I make the motion, we combine budgets three to, three through 25.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Montgomery made the motion, we combine budgets three through 25. Second, Mr. Hammond, and any comments, council members?
Now, this still gives us the opportunity for Angela to come up, right? That's-
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Mr. Darby.
And the floor is open for comments.
Not yet, Ms. Williamson. This is just to combine them.
Okay. All right. No comments, council, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce budget items number three through 25.
So moved.
Second.
Now, Angela.
I have one request on the alternative fuel stations to increase revenue $376,000 and, and increase expenses $451,828, which will be a net income decrease of $75,628.
Would you repeat that once again? It went a little fast. Okay. Any, any others?
We have one more question on the general fund.
I'm sorry, since we are removing the agenda item for the repeal of the ordinance on the Arts Council, that's currently not in the budget, does that need to be amended back in at this time, since we are not repealing that ordinance?
No, no.
Okay, I know there's to renegotiate, but I just didn't want it to be an, an issue for that.
Yes, that's in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
So do we need a motion?
Yes, sir.
I make that motion.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any comments? Anyone would like to speak on this item? Council, please cast your vote.
Mr. Darby?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
Motion carries.
I had a question-
Yes, sir.
-regarding the change at the alternative fuel stations we had talked about in the past about divesting ourselves, it, what-
We have a property description, we're currently in the process of, there's a second one that has, that we're getting a correct property description, and it's my understanding that the council wishes to explore the possibility of putting those for sale. I, once I get that correct property description for the second station, then I'm gonna prepare the ordinance that will have to be advertised once a week for three weeks, you know, and an appraisal of that to, to sell.
Thank you.
Council, now I need a motion to introduce budget items number three through 25 as amended.
Make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Anyone would like to speak on that item? Please cast your vote, council.
Item number 27. Introduce an ordinance to amend the 2022 waters and sewer fund budgets, first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Maggio. Discussion, debate, council? And the floor is open for anyone would like to comment.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to replace the water service to 221 Traffic Street due to a dead-end water main causing water quality concerns at a cost of $13,000 to come from the Water Capital Contingency Fund. First reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Smith, second, Mr. Maggio. Discussion, debate? Floor is open for comments. Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to amend the 2022 alternative fuel station fund budget, first and final reading? I'm sorry, that's a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Hammond. And comments? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to approve the use of city water to serve the Rosewalk subdivision residential development, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Smith. End of discussion. Floor is open for comments. Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution for public works to fill a laborer one position in the street sweeping and grass cutting division due to a transfer, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Williams, second, Mr. Maggio. And anyone would like to comment? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of two police sergeants due to retirements and the hiring of one police officer for the Bossier City Police Department, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Free, second, Mr. Smith. Discussion, council? Anyone would like to comment on this item? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring or promoting of a foreman one for the lift stations division in the Public Utilities Department, first and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Williams made the motion, second, Mr. Maggio.
I have Mr. Smith and Mr. Montgomery, is that not right? I mean, it's Mr. Smith and Mr. Maggio, sorry.
Me, me and Mr. Williams spoke at the same time.
Okay, we'll go with that. Any comments? Okay, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution certifying off system bridge program compliance for 2022, 2023 for the city of Bossier City, Louisiana, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second, Mr. Williams. Okay. End of discussion. And the floor is open for anyone who would like to speak on this item. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to re- Adopt a resolution to renegotiate the terms and provisions of the existing agreement between the city of Bossier City and the Bossier Arts Council, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion, Mr. Smith, and a second by Mr. Maggio. And wanted to ask if Ms. Nottingham would come forward and give us a summation of the facility in East Bank and how the city has partnered with BAC over the years and that we anticipate a mutual relationship in the future.
Yes. So first want to say that we do appreciate all of the work the Arts Council has done. And we are certainly not moving to defund the Arts Council. There's currently eighty thousand dollars still allocated in the 2023 budget for the Arts Council. And in addition to that funding, the city of Bossier provides free of charge the building used by the Arts Council. And we also pay for the utilities to that building, which were approximately fifty thousand dollars in 2021. And the city has also made significant investment of over seven hundred thousand dollars in the building for improvements, which serves as their headquarters. So, you know, we, we do have an amount budgeted to support the Arts Council, but in addition, the city does also provide, I think, quite a bit of other services or amenities and things to the Arts Council for their operations.
Very good, thank you so much. And just for the record, we, we have a favorable relationship. So I think having the attorney and council members to look at the future contract with the BAC would be advantageous to all parties involved. And we, we certainly appreciate your interest in doing what you do. And we would welcome input in the future when we get this all worked out. Mr. Attorney, we, we plan to get this done expeditiously, I'm sure?
I'll be happy to meet with, once the, any interested council people or councilmen to find out what terms and conditions and provisions that the, the city would require. And then I think that after that, a joint meeting with the council. You know, of course, we'd have to do it less than three, or three or less because of the open meetings law, have a discussion with the Arts Council. And then, once we're all on the same page, I'll be happy to draft it.
Okay. All right, very good. And I'm sure we'll have a volunteer from the council to participate in those talks. I understand, Ms. Pope, you're here, I think, I think I saw you, okay. We will allow you to speak if you like to, or you can wait until we get more work done on this issue.
We actually have a person to handle the workings of the plaza? Who can give some insight if you all would like to hear from him?
In the future or now?
If we could, Mr. Darby, have the people come to the mic and state their admin address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Jeremy Hefner. I live at four-two-two-zero Riley Lane, Shreveport, Louisiana, apartment A-one-zero-six, seven-eleven-oh-five. I just brought some notes of some brief logistics. I'm sure we can talk about it more in detail when we do have our official meeting. But I just wanted to point out a couple of things that we've done regarding the plaza. So, of course, we've been managing the plaza since prior to the ribbon cutting. We were asked to just manage the contracts and promote the rentability of the plaza. But we've gone definitely above and beyond that. We've created and run the social media pages on Facebook and Instagram with regular posts and highlights of not only events located within the plaza, but within the district entirely. We've also created the logo for the plaza, as well as logos for some of the surrounding businesses. And we've actually created a map, graphic map, of the district. And we're actually going to work on updating that since Red River Brewing just opened. And I know the new firehouse is going to be there. That's, of course, thanks to the creativity in our marketing and our offices specifically. We've maintained the image and the face that people kind of recognize online today as the plaza. We've personally gone door-to-door to maintain our neighborly obligations and have worked with other surrounding businesses in collaboration for their own events in the space. So we collaborate with Bojacks, Flying Heart, other businesses in the area and kind of help their events go on in the plaza. We booked hundreds of events, which far surpasses the number of events yearly in Festival Plaza across the river, honestly. And that's because we run the space in a way that is beyond simply just a rental. It's a community location. Locals love to utilize the space, and if the city takes hold, you know, I, I, I'm hoping we can keep our, our mutual, I'm, I'm hoping we can negotiate to maintain this really good relationship that we have and keep that door open. Not only have we rented out the space, but we programmed several of our own events on our own budget, many of which are annual events inclusive of holiday specials that many locals look forward to. We just had one this past weekend, SBC Zombie Walk. If I had to guess, we had about seven hundred patrons in the plaza this weekend, it was amazing. We've got the East Bank Holiday Market coming up on December third, the East Bank Art-A-Gro Market, we do the golf cart parade. And of course, we communicate with all the other businesses in the district. We've hosted costume contests, chalk wars, outdoor gallery shows, food truck block parties, live musical performances, various markets, collaborative charities, scavenger hunts, fundraisers, film screenings, and even programming for visiting conventions and journalists. I'm actually in communication with the Tourism Bureau right now to get the Southern Travel Writers Association down there for an event that we're working on for February. Due to it being under our umbrella, we submit annual reports detailing updates regarding the businesses because we have the paperwork for maintaining it as a cultural district on the map, which is inclusive of the tourism that comes through there. We've got banners out there in the plaza, an LED screen facing it for promotional material. We're posting on the social media, sending out press releases and coordinating newsroom interviews for promotion. And we're meeting with local journals, journalists to get articles in the paper and local magazines to promote the space. And honestly, the list goes on and on. We just got a community grant of seventeen thousand dollars to help us pay for stage and sound to kind of elevate the events out there. We're looking forward to what's to come with that. And, you know, what goes into it, six to eight weeks of marketing with scheduled posts, well-configured graphic design that comes out of our office, press releases, coordination with Bossier PD, coordination for vendors, Food Truck Alliance, making sure the licenses are up to date and up to code. And we coordinate with the Tax Assessor's Office to ensure that vendors are up to date on taxes owed to the city and making sure that you guys have that information for future taxes owed. We make sure everybody's insurance is up to date and up to code for the city. And as far as revenue is concerned, the BAC typically waives the fee for most of the events in the plaza. We do charge for four profit entities, and that money is ultimately recycled back into our marketing and supplies for programming. The fifty thousand provided for the management of the plaza, it really goes into mostly the marketing and programming and maintenance. We've bought supplies to go out there and actually help clean ourselves. I know that there's groups that go out there and clean once or twice a week, but I myself have gone out there and cleaned up beer cans and trash and things of that nature. Coming up, we've got Vet Fest, which is an annual veterans market event that happens every year. We've got the Food Truck Block Party, December second, East Bank Holiday Market, December third, working with the Tapper Cital to, to get the Bossier Tap Program out there for the rehearsals, they do that every year. Anyway, that's just kind of some of what goes into it. We look forward to doing even more down the road. We look forward to our meeting with you guys. If you guys ever want to reach out to me, you know, you know where to find me. But thank you for letting me speak.
Okay. Thank you so much. And you make the case why we should continue the partnership. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Okay. We, did we vote?
No.
Okay. We, we, we will, anyone else needed to speak? Okay. We want to limit it to just two minutes, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir, I will adjust my timer. I'm Molly Corbett. I am a former resident of Bossier Parish. Currently reside in, in Shreveport, in the, that little place in Bossier that is still claimed by the east side of the city. My address is one thousand one River Oaks Drive, Shreveport, seven-eleven-oh-four. I'm here today because I serve and have served for the last three years as the president of the Board of Directors for the Bossier Arts Council. And I, I want to, of course, agree and, and laud Jeremy for the excellent work that he did to provide a case for what we've been doing. I would like to say that when you hear words like repeal, it makes nonprofits nervous. And so I'm sure that you can understand why our reaction to that news was strong. But we are the Little Arts Council that could, and I'm proud of the work that we've done. We have worked very hard to be diligent stewards of the financials that have been given to us by the city of Bossier City. And we have also worked very hard to be very transparent in that, which I know that you'll see once we have our working meeting to talk about and renegotiate the ordinance moving forward. I believe in promises and I believe in keeping them. And I look forward to a continued and long profitable for the city, but also good-for-community culture relationship with this council moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. So those were four. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance appropriating one million two hundred and thirty thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act grant for a one-time premium pay allowance of two thousand dollars to eligible full-time employees of the city of Bossier City, first reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Smith, second, Mr. Montgomery. And on this item, I think it would be prudent to have Mr. Montgomery to share the good news to the city employees regarding what this ordinance does.
Well, you know, I always like to talk about history, and some people might not have been aware of where this city was at one time and where we are today. And I can speak from several councilmen that lived through that and the financial crisis of oh-nine. And we unfortunately had to lay off people. It was a sad day, sitting here in these chambers. And a promise we made was that we would do whatever we could to be stewards of the taxpayers' money and be financially sound from that day forward. And I think this council and all the administrations, including Mr. Chandler and our new councilman, are committed to that pledge to the employees of Bossier City as well as the taxpayers of Bossier City. We were able to give raises several years ago, which the employees certainly deserved after what they had been through. We, unfortunately, as a nation, went through COVID, and that affected our city as well. Something that several people have been working on, including myself, was to find a way to reward those employees throughout the city. That's fire, police, EMS, and municipal employees, especially, you know, the water and sewer guys. Everybody that stuck it out through that pandemic. And fortunately, through the financial fiscal decisions that we've made and we fought through it as a city, we were able to exceed our budget when it comes to taxes collected, which was, you know, we had a surplus in the general fund. And there's no better way that you can say thank you than to reward those people that we feel contributed to that general fund surplus. So we came up with a, a number that we thought the general fund could handle, not put us in any kind of detriment financially. I discussed that at length with Ms. Williamson, is that correct? We all concur, the mayor. And we wanted to make sure that everyone that was a city employee received the same because we believe that there, everyone is part of the same team here, working on behalf of the taxpayers of Bossier City. So it was with great honor that this city council is able to offer all the employees in the city of Bossier that weathered that storm two thousand dollars. And our goal is to have that out before Christmas so that hopefully your lives are made a little bit better. And on behalf of the council, I'd say thank you. And we will make that pledge going forward. We appreciate your service, always have and always will.
Well said, Mr. Montgomery.
Okay, thank you so much. I want to, I appreciate the mayor and Mr. Williams and Mr. Montgomery for spearheading that compensation package. I, I think it's well-deserved as well. And I, I believe all council members feel the same, that you so greatly deserve it. And we appreciate the service of all staff in the city. We have the motion made, in a second, the floor is open for someone who would like to make a comment. Okay, counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Public hearings. Public hearing for the city of Bossier Cities 2022, 2023 CDBG Annual Action Plan for the Application for Community Development Block Grant Funds.
Good afternoon, counsel.
Good afternoon. Afternoon, Bob.
I try to keep it as short as I can, but we, this is just our annual application for the Community Development Block Grant. We apply for it every year. We actually, we're a, a city that gets money, you know, whether we apply for it or not. I mean, we just have to give a plan for it, and that's what this is. This is a plan on how we're going to spend it. And we don't always get the same amount. We don't know how much we're going to get till Congress appropriates the overall budget. And then they break it down by formula that's in the law that gives us a certain amount based on our statistics for the city. We have some control over how we can spend the money, but they, there are a lot of strings attached that we have to, to meet in order to, to spend the money. So we can't spend it on every, every kind of a project. And basically, it has to meet three national objectives. It has to either benefit low-to-moderate-income persons, or it has to eliminate slums and blight, or if there's a serious or immediate threat to health or welfare, like a disaster of some kind, it could go towards that. And I put a copy up there of the, the notes on this, so you.
Okay, thank you.
This is the, this is actual, this is the project we're going to do here.
Thank you, every council member has a copy. Thank you, Mr. Brown. This is a public hearing on this item, and it's open for comments of those who are here. Anyone would like to comment? Okay, we close the public hearing.
Adopt a resolution supporting the city's application to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding under entitlement status under authority of Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of nineteen seventy-four, forty-two USC thirty-five thirty-five D, and forty-two USC fifty-three oh-one. Ed Squire, first and final reading.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Motion, Mr. Montgomery? Okay, motion, uh, Mr. Montgomery, second, Mr. Williams, any discussion? And anyone would like to comment? Please cast your vote, council.
Motion carries. Public hearing concerning the twenty twenty-three operating and capital budget ordinances for the city of Bossier City.
So now the, uh, floor is open for anyone who would like to speak regarding the, uh, twenty twenty-three operation, operationing, uh, in capital budget ordinances. We close the public hearing.
Under reports, we have Ms. Angela Williamson, Finance Director, the monthly financial report.
Good afternoon, councilor, Mayor Chandler, you have before you the financials for the month ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, page one is the revenue by fund report, the city's currently running twenty-one percent over budget, hotel motel taxes fund revenue is up because the state sales tax dedication in the amount of one point eight million was received in September, last year it was received in October, EMS billings for September are down compared to prior year. Page two is the expenses by fund report, the city's currently running six percent under budget, civic center fund expenditures are increased due to the current year restroom remodel, EMS expenses are increased due to billing company write-offs, the alternative fuel stations are over budget, but the revenue is as well at a hundred and eighty-two percent. Page three is the sales tax comparative report, sales tax revenue is up eleven point four percent compared to September twenty twenty-one. Page four is the manning report, there are two more employees than last month, total employees at the month end is six hundred and sixty-five, which is thirty-nine below the four hu- seven hundred and four budgeted positions. Page five is the water and sewer utility report, net operating income after debt service for September twenty-two has increased five percent compared to September twenty-one, current year-to-date income has increased ninety-seven percent over prior year and is twenty-one percent under budget, on a rolling twelve-month basis, current net operating income is up fifty-nine percent, are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Williamson.
Thank you.
Have Engineering Department monthly project report.
Great job, Clinton, thank you.
Good report.
My time gets shorter and shorter. We'll go real, real quick, promise.
As long as Clinton doesn't have not been, we could get out of here, right?
I guess, yeah. Uh, sitting at ninety-seven million, uh, ongoing design and construction with ninety-one under construction, uh, we did close out a couple of subdivisions last month, so we're a little down on those. Uh, Carriage Way Phase Two, uh, they're still chopping ahead about twenty-nine days ahead based on time elapsed and monthly billings. East Bank Fire Station, that project I believe is substantially complete, pending fire marshal approval Friday. Uh, LTRI, they're moving forward on schedule, and believe that's supposed to be done January twenty-third, I believe. Uh, seventy-one lighting improvements, they've, uh, made a lot of progress in the past week, they've almost got every footing in down there, now we're just playing a waiting game on getting poles and fixtures in. Bossier Arts Council, rocking and rolling down there, uh, on schedule, they're doing a good job out there, keeping the site clean as well. Um, as I said, private development, I believe this is the Cove at the Velagio, but we're down to about five currently under construction. A couple of projects in design are out to bid, um, was that six, can't count today, uh, one to note is Citywide Streets, we have a pre-construction on that Friday, so in next coming, we shall start seeing a lot of construction moving on that one. Took enough?
I wanted to ask, um, regarding, is the tank voting over?
I believe it did end.
Yes. Yes, sir. I think it from those bases that, um, we didn't come out on top this time.
No, sir, we did not win People's Choice Award, but the Tank of the Year is still in decision, we'll learn what tank, what, who, whose tank will reign supreme on Friday, and as you'll recall, we, we won People's Choice in twenty twenty, but did not win Tank of the Year, so maybe, maybe they'll get it right this time, we'll see.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Patrick, almost took all your time, mayor, he, he left you thirty seconds.
Uh, thank you, thank you, President, I appreciate that, I hear that, I see we have some Bossier youth leadership people here, would you please re- stand up and let it be noted, that's some of our, our future leaders of Bossier City, and I thank y'all for coming here, thank y'all. Also, I want to thank Ms. Williamson, she's not feeling well, and she's still working hard for us every day with guys, and I want to thank her for all her hard work, and also I want to thank Mr. Darby for your, your salary study that you got going on, and I want to tell you that I could get my full support on that, and I appreciate that, and I wanted to thank the citizens for voting for the, the, uh, water tower, David kind of cut that away from me, but, uh, thank all the citizens for voting for the tower, we, I think we didn't quite get there, but we might, so, and, uh, and I want to thank y'all for the premium pay for all the, the city workers for the whole hard work, and I appreciate that, thank y'all.
Why don't we, uh, introduce the Bossier youth, mayor?
Okay, you want to introduce?
Well, I don't know them personally, I just know-
Okay.
I will, it says they introduce themselves and where they're from.
Y'all walk up here, don't be shy.
Just tell us your name and where you go to school.
I'm Madden Sorry, and I go to Airline.
Caroline Wavy, Airline.
Gabrielle McGinty, Benton.
My name's Kate Fording, I go to Benton.
Hannah Robinson, and I go to Benton.
I'm McKenzie Nugent, and I go to Benton.
I'm Cynthia Williams, and I go to Benton.
I'm Christian Rayburn, I go to Parkway.
Very good, nice to have you all here today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Free.
Yes, sir.
No, I was thanking him for pointing him out.
Yeah, we always appreciate the, the young leaders of Bossier City, thank you, mayor, for reminding us they were here, and Mr. Free as well, if there's another business, this meeting is adjourned.